It really have not been maintained or kept for years. So, we really have, we really asking for some help so we can have our road passable so we can get back to our property.
Uh, yeah, thank you all, Mr. Stevens and Beverly for coming today. Uh, that, that is a county road that has not been up kept. I think primarily because there's been a gate there. And we have been really under impression that that was you all's gate. But you tell me now that it's not you all's gate, that gate belonged to someone else put it up there.
Well, I say yes, there's two gates. There is one gate to our property. That's why they're not able to go through the Holland shed right there. So, that gate need to be removed. Then, that goes to the rice property. And then, we get to our property, there is gonna need to be a COVID there so that they can have access to the both roads.
I wanna let the, uh, our road manager, uh, speak to that. But I think primarily because those gates cannot be on a county road is one of the reasons why we have not been servicing that road, I believe. But our road manager, I believe, is, is system.
Yeah, I think exactly.
System, yeah.
Are the gates do prevent us from maintaining any, any public road? If there's a gate there, we don't try to go through. But it shouldn't be a gate on, on the public road, so that it may be a misunderstanding to the landlord.
How, how do we resolve that issue if there's a gate there to get to our land?
But that'll be something that the board would have to take up, the, uh, trying to give with.
Legally, you cannot have, let me ask this question so that I make sure that I understand. Are there two gates up or just one gate?
There's two gates.
Okay.
One gate, okay, that's three pieces of property. There is the rice, that, that, that's a gate there. You know, we gotta get through that gate to get to our property. Now, we do have a gate that can be removed, that's not a problem. But there is another gate there that need to be removed from the Holland shed.
So.
Two gates.
Two gates.
Two gates that.
Alright, one of, y'all take care of the, the gate, y'all can take care of. We're probably gonna have to send them a letter out so they need, that they need to remove that gate or it will be removed. Um, but that, any road, any road that's in, or we can abandon the road. Now, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but.
That's been done.
That's been done.
Right now, that's kinda where we're at. Uh, but if we can, if we can find out, do we have any idea whose gate it is?
Yes, I do, you see, it's the rice is the gate, but the Holland shed is renting the property from the rice, Jerome Rice.
We got cows on that place.
There's cows.
Which is why they've got a gate. So, there's gates on both ends of that where the cows are. So, the, the Stevenson's have a gate and then the Holland shed folks have a gate.
If we remove this gate, are we gonna let cows out?
Yes, and that, that's some of the delicacy of this issue.
Okay. Well, we got, I, I think it's two issues involved here. There have been, in the past, there have been a cattle gap.
Right.
To keep those cows from leaving their property.
The Holland.
I don't know whether the cattle gap now is functioning or not.
That's why they putting a gate there.
They're putting a gate there. So, we do have some cattle gaps, strangely enough, we do have some cattle gaps on county road.
Alright, it sounds like we need to get the property owners together. The, the county doesn't maintain cattle gap, I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm just being honest, we don't maintain cattle gaps. However, you deserve to be able to get to your property and we need to figure that out. So, I'm gonna give you my information and let's get together and see if we can get this worked out. Cause I don't want the cows out, I don't want anybody hurt by it. Somebody hits one of those cows, we may be talking about somebody dying and I certainly don't want that to happen. But let's, let's, let's get together and see.
Mr. and Ms. Stevens, I understand y'all are in Texas?
I'm in Texas, uh, Birmingham.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone local that we can work with?
There's some, well, I, I have no problem in coming back whenever we can get a favor.
Okay, alright.
That's not a problem.
Cause you, cause you all leave your information in with our board attorney, our county administrator, so that we can communicate back and forth.
Yes, we.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Does the county road extend beyond both the gates?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it does. We have a, we have a house, we used to drive a school bus and that's where we used to, we have a three-bedroom house back there.
Does anybody stay there now? Does anybody stay in there in the house now?
Well, my goal is to come back home. No, no one is staying there.
Nah, there's no one there now.
No one there now because you can't get nobody to come through.
Alright, let's, let's get together, we'll figure this out. There's got to be a solution to this that makes some sense. Probably not gonna figure it out sitting here on that.
Right.
Thank you.
So, do we, we need a motion to authorize our turn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Little.
Myself.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, need a motion to acknowledge, uh, report. Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Little. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. Is there anyone else that would like, good morning?
Good morning, my name is Catherine Bell, I stay on Harris Road.
That's my church number.
I stay on Harris Road, and, uh, on Harris Road, you all have replaced that bridge and, you know, been over a hundred years and we appreciate you replacing the bridge. But now we wanna know what's the upkeep, you know, from, you know, are you gonna blacktop that road? Or what I see they winding out, they, they had not been putting any rocks, anything on it, so it rain, when it rain real bad, you can't get up through that way from Turkey Creek. You know, going up the other way, so they put a few rocks down. And there's another problem that's occurred over in the ditch from Turkey Creek, after you pass the resident home. The trees that were small, they have grown up into tall cree, uh, trees. So, those trees now, when the water come, it washes out in the road. The rocks that they put on, they washes out to the other side. So, I wanna know what's the upkeep, what, you know, what they planning on doing.
Uh, that little section that you're talking about, I think it deserves the county and county dollars to make that section passable and travel so we can travel through. But I really can't see us paving that little section there. But Mr. Clyde Hill, looking at that section that you're living on, when we pass that, when we get past that bridge. When we get past the bridge going toward, um, Turkey Creek. We, we are looking at the section of what could we do to, uh, eliminate the gravel road. The gravel road in that section and from Harris Road on down, uh, from Chappa Hill. Of course, we're looking at what could we do to, um, eliminate the, the, the travel and make that road more travelable too. So, we're looking at pavement from, from the church, Chappa Hill Church, Chappa Hill Road on back and how can we improve that? And how can we improve that section from, from that bridge that we just put in to, uh, to Turkey Creek? So, uh, our, um, county engineer has received a request now to do evaluation of that section. And, uh, I believe he is doing the evaluation of it now.
But what about the trees that them grew up, you know, that caused, the water used to flow real vivid, you know, but since the tree, the trees them grew up, it's causing the water to overflow. Out of the ditch into the road and it washed the rocks off the road. So, are they gonna do anything about that?
Yeah, we, we're working on that section too, but we can't, I can't say we're gonna do a pavement there. But we are working on that section to make it, uh, more travel friendly. So, we are looking, we're looking at that all together, uh, that section all together. All of Harris Road now is being evaluated.
I see it's a slow process because they wind the road out some and then they put in the rocks down. It was like a whole lot before they put the rocks down, that's after the rain came and it was so muddy, you couldn't get up through there. So, two days ago or three days ago, they just put rocks down just a few.
I think we, we, we can send our road manager out and make sure we, we have the upkeep and maintenance, make it passable right now till we can address those other issues. Sound like, uh, matter of removing some trees and doing a lot of work. So, I think we'll instruct our road manager to go out and take a look at that and go ahead and take some action on what to be, be done immediately, uh, to help the situation.
Thank you.
Uh, motion by supervisor, motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trainer. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone else would like to approach the board for three minutes? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joining me. What's your name for?
A barbier.
Good morning.
My name, my name.
Well, I do, but just for the, for the.
But, uh, what I like to say, um, about our road, I know it's gonna be a process, you say, uh, we're under pain. But when it rain, I mean, we need some rock, but the ditches and stuff need opening up with all the rocks in the ditch. And you need to, uh, yes, get somebody out there to open the ditches up because it's a waste of time just putting the rocks on. Cause when it rain, all the rock laying open the ditch and, and water in the yard and everything. Because when they came down and cut all the trees and stuff down, they just, there are no ditches for the water to rain in. So, we really need to get that done.
Could you state the name of the road?
Clifford Lane, one fifty-two Clifford Lane.
Thank you, we acknowledge your report from this, Ms. uh, Ms. here.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Little to acknowledge the report. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Would there be anyone else that would like to approach the board? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, you check out, Bob?
Ms. Ila?
Yeah, I was, you're on about Adams Lane.
Adams?
Adams.
What, what did you?
I was, you know, the road need paved because, you know, it be real dusty and a big truck, it's kinda dirty. And we can't even sit outside, but too much dust. And we on the seat and. We should, we paid today.
Stand on lane, Supervisor Trainer, that's your.
We acknowledge your report from Ms. Ila.
Okay, uh, well, thank you for coming and, uh, you know, period Supervisor Second is working on. Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams, that we acknowledge your report. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Would there be anyone else that would like to approach the board? Good morning.
Let me, I'd like, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Teresa Rice. And I'm here about, um, Clifford Lane. We did get the dust suspension, which didn't do no good, just really messed up up under the cars and stuff. Stuck to it, they have to wash them more times than they've been washing them. And like I said, back dusting, just like some nature said, you can't sit outside for the dust, when the trash trucks and the buses and stuff come in. Inside the cars and houses and stuff, like out on the beach or somewhere, so dusting it and just need to be done. Supervisor, they supposed to pay taxes also. And I, I'm just tired of having to come up here and repeat myself and all seem like I'm doing no good, like I'm wasting my time and y'all's too. And if there's anybody else I can speak to over y'all, I would like to do it because it seem like we did no process here. And I'm just tired of it. People sick over there, people's getting sick, asthma, cancer, irritate, related, diabetes, it just gonna be no soon. Some need to be done, soon or delayed.
State, name of the road?
Kelly.
Kelly, yeah.
No, we got Clifford Lane.
Clifford Lane.
Thank you, most we acknowledge your report from this.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Little, that we acknowledge your report. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Did I see another?
Maybe I have to put some awesome checks. Morning, Mr. Jack. I can stand about here. Okay. Awesome checks, D five fire department. Oh, y'all have an item on your agenda today, number four under Mr. Carpenter here for outdoor management notification systems for the weather sirens. And I just have a simple request of the board and that being considered as the one that slated for OCTOP station to be located in that section. It's a topography issue, that station sits below the grade for a significant amount of that area. Um, and what is available would basically be south and west, which is pretty much farmland, so twenty, thirty houses. The Bethel station sits on top of the hill, there's several neighborhoods around there, lots of people out and about, which is what those sirens are for. We're just thinking of getting better use of resources. Yes, sir.
Jack, you, you've looked at some of these, uh, requirements on there. Is this going to cause any problem with, with us, if we did move there or anything?
I, I don't know. So, to be fair, we found out about this a few weeks ago when we sold our property. Um, I don't know what the funding source is on that, it's all equal.
Yeah, it's a program we're putting up, I think it's seven by, I can't.
Six, I believe.
Yeah, six, six sirens, um, at different, uh, volunteer fire departments. Um, I would ask, Mr. Jack, have you spoken with, uh, I guess it would be under, uh, Jarvis now, to, about the location on that fire station? Nor, Jarvis is, is gonna be over the grant, the stadium for all this. Uh, we can certainly do a change order, get that due moved, that's not a problem. But it's gonna be Jarvis's call as to where that thing goes as far as ours.
We will, we will certainly take, uh, the recommendation out of the request, take your request under.
Sure.
Under, under recommendation.
Going ahead.
Uh, and we will, we will coordinate with our board attorney, our county administrator, our fire coordinator, our EMA director. And, uh, make sure we, we get this happening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Motion by supervisor.
Second.
Yeah. Motion by Supervisor Williams, uh, to acknowledge the report, second by Supervisor Trainer. Any other discussion? Yeah, um, I have spoken with, uh, the, the fire chief also for district fire. And he seemed to think that's a very reasonable request, a reasonable request to move that, uh, file along, that law system on OCTOP two. That's where all the people said. But we'll add the fire chief in on that conversation also.
It's from OCTOP two Bethel, that's what he's asking. If, if we, the change order won't be a problem. If this determine that that's where it need to be there, we could certainly make that happen.
Motion acknowledged, so motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. All in favor? Okay. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. With that, good morning.
Good morning, Brenda Kelly. We're on Clifford Lane. So, I'm gonna echo Kelly Road too, cause as I always say, it's very important to me and I would like to see the whole road paved. But I'm concerned mostly at this point because it's been saying, because there's no one living back there on our land on Kelly Road. That, you know, it's not gonna get paved at this time. So, as far as Clifford Lane, I'm gonna echo what Teresa Rice said. They need come out and to me, look it out, it seem like when they put the stuff down, uh, clean the road for the solution that will take care of some of the dust. It seem like they did a good job and by watching them do it, I really thought that that would take care of the problem. But apparently, it did not. So, I'm here to echo, like she said, you know, that dust is right back, it really do that for only a couple of days or so, and my finger burning right after that. So, we got a very dusty road still and not knowing what it may cost to have that solution put down to control dust. But to keep on doing that, to me, it really don't make any sense. Cause I'm sure it ain't cheap, cause a loaf of bread is not cheap. So, if you're gonna take all this time, pay people to come out and put that down, it seem like to me, it would be easier to go and pave the road and be done with it. But that's just the way I think. And as far as Rock Hill Road, where we exit off to get on Clifford Lane, we got a lot of holes and stuff out there. And that we really do need to be addressed. Actually, really, it needs some more pavement, cause we got a raw spot that been passed up and we still, as soon as they patch it up, we have holes coming right back. So, if you can and if you will, we will appreciate, um, something to be done by this Sunday, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, acknowledge your report from Ms. Kelly.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Little to acknowledge. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Would there be anybody else? Good morning. Okay, 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 well, let, let me finish up the, uh, make sure you got. Uh, would there be anybody else that would like to approach the board during our citizens' comment period? If there is no one else, this portion of our agenda is now closed. And we will move into the next phase of our agenda, which will be, uh, ride airport, Mr. Ryan and Lincoln. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, let me get back on your business then.
Yes, sir.
I think during our last meeting with this same, uh, item, explaining some other invoices that y'all have gotten. And since then, uh, the project has kind of decreased, but, uh, the county portion for the matching funds has not, have not increased. And we did earn that first grant of four hundred ninety-one thousand from NDO. Then, in, uh, March, we received another NDO grant for four hundred eighty-two thousand. And the governor has signed off on this ARC grant for nine hundred fifty-six thousand. That grant's in Washington, there's a new person in Washington that's asking a whole bunch of questions. And he's asking that each entity like MSU, they want their portion in the written, they want the city's portion in their minutes. I have found that. And Wayne and I looked through the minutes and attitude, we cannot find this funding of fifty-one thousand in your minutes from last year. So, I'm looking for y'all again, asking for your support on this project and your portion for this building, which is a new facility for air-lift, for medical, for medical helicopter, in disaster response. For the northeast corner of the city, city and our backyard. And your portion is two point four percent of the two million dollar budget. It's fifty-one thousand off.
So, the board just needs to make, to get this, uh, in our minutes.
In the minutes. Make the motion. Yeah, make, get that, make the motion. And then if we could do, I know it takes another month for the minutes, or, or a couple of weeks. If we could get some type of letter earlier that we can send to Washington, just in early September, we have to finish our grant application with them up there.
That's a motion for a written commitment too. A written, a motion by Supervisor Little, second by Supervisor, uh, Williams. Uh, any other discussion?
I would just like to say, uh.
Go ahead, go ahead, supervisor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that suppression, repair, and, and normality, this, uh, air care situation. Having, um, not only the faster response, air care, critical life services, but also the job creation director. I just wanna thank Mr. Lincoln, all the guys down there, a lot of people just don't understand how, how good of an operation they run at Air Force, how do you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any, any other discussion? The motion was to.
Approved committee, signed fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty dollars of local net.
To pay.
The committee had.
Add, add to the bills that are to be paid and, and to pay.
Uh, I went to the city, told them, we saw it happened sometime in that June area.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes as unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
This, this also, uh, brings about twenty full-time jobs on the county.
That's all we get.
Uh, air, uh, air nurses, pilots, mechanics, uh, cleaning people, you know, all, all of that.
Appreciate your work, appreciate you.
Thank you so much for what you do, you do a good job. I'm very familiar with.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and the airport.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda, we've got the man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Joe Max Eagle. Good morning, sir.
Morning, boy.
Yeah.
Uh, Wayne, they have.
Before, before, uh, Joe might get started, some of you, I was able to get a copy of this, this, uh, inter-local agreement in your packets. It came in late Friday. I did get a letter in your packet from GTR Link, but I did not get a copy of the inter-local agreement in your packet. He's gonna talk us through it and then I'm gonna ask if you would, um, if you like what he's talking about and, and you agree with it, then for the inter-local agreement, I'd like for y'all to allow, to, to, to approve the inter-local agreement pending legal review. And that way, if, let me and Rob go through it administratively and legally and if we like it, then we could let Supervisor Howard sign it after the fact. Pending legal review, right.
And, and we're, we're in full agreement, we think that's, we think that's fair. Uh, so, I'm gonna kinda give you some background, uh, in the, in the, in the, uh, in the North Star Park. Uh, y'all have always been kind of the advocates for, for the stuff the county has. Uh, the city, the county, OC that all kinda work together and running. But when we started getting grants out there, we started running them through, through y'all. Uh, if you'll remember, we got a site development grant, one, uh, that had ARC money and, and, uh, uh, state money that the governor's office provided. Uh, we've done a bunch of work out there, we're still waiting on the core, we've still got about a billion and seven worth of work to do out there on site development grant one. Uh, right after site development grant one, they came to us, the state did, said, we're gonna give you site development grant two. Uh, and it's about a billion, uh, seven, uh, was the amount, a billion six five. We, uh, uh, we built that two hundred thousand square foot pad that you see, uh, when you turn to go to Lewis. Uh, right there on right inside of the road. I think they had punch list before y'all maybe traveled, I've seen some traffic, Wayne, the last, last supervisor meeting or.
We, we have received, I mean, we've been paying bills, you know, all throughout. I think I got our last closeout from, um, Burns on that two hundred square foot pad. Now, we still, I think I saw an email come through from Neil Schaefer with their last engineering invoice on that. So, we should have wrapped up SDG two. Now, my question, that's the one that's, that has the, um.
Match.
Match, yes, sir. So, just to be clear.
Yes, sir.
The, the money he's talking about is the one that requires a ten percent match. That match is being split by us and the city of Stark. So, his proposal from this point forward is gonna be talking about that.
That much.
Circumstances.
And we think, we think when those final bills get paid, we're gonna make somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars left over, plus or minus. And I think this agreement reads that way. Uh, we, we're, we, we're not, then started looking at what we could do, you know, what, what could we spend and have some part. Uh, the city, uh, uh, some of the county folks, city folks, OC folks, we sit down, had, had a couple of meetings. The, uh, the city would really like to rebuild and re- relocate the sewage pumping station that serves that area over there. They'd like to move it to the northwest corner of, of the Parks property, move it over on the Parks property, rebuild a little bit of gravity sewer and get there. It's a two, two and a half million dollar project, we think, okay? And when I say we think, heck, you never know at this stage, right, if they've dealt some bids. Uh, uh, the grant is to you, the board supervisor, to the county. Uh, the city would, uh, your partner would like to spend that on the pump station. Uh, Phyllis was in, in those meetings and she said, well, the grant's to the county, uh, how would we work that? Well, we asked, well, first of all, we asked the state and the city, NBA, would you allow us to reallocate this money? The answer is yes, okay? We've got that in writing, they'll allow us to reallocate the money. Uh, then, we determined it would be necessary for y'all to enter into a memorandum of understanding to let that money be used for that. And more importantly, we said that any other money other than the grant money would be not the board of supervisors responsibility, but others, okay? In other words, the city or whoever they get the, the balance of the money from, uh, they could, they could fuck, okay? So, what this document does, I think probably section number three, second page, section three and section four, I think are kinda, you know, Rob, Rob will probably look at a, a whole lot of other stuff. But section three and four kinda spell out what we're talking, that you will allow for this seven hundred thousand dollars to be spent on that pump station and that they'll be responsible for providing the balance of the money, uh, and getting it done. And I think that first one is, uh, uh, basically, you know, you'll do, well, higher, well, the money's gotta come to you and then get sent to them or y'all should get the money and send it to, however, the process determines to be working. And we would see that Phyllis would be the traffic cop on that, uh, uh, doing it for us, for y'all, for, for the, for the group. That's kind of the simple request. Uh, that will free up whatever balance of match money y'all had committed to the project would be put back, back in the contract.
And for the benefit of the board, you and I were looking at how much. And for the benefit of the board, you and I were looking at how much match money was left on that industrial park bond. It's not as much as you think it is. I mean, we've only got about thirty-four thousand dollars left on that, uh, bond. So I don't think we'd have enough match money to clear out the pool of seven hundred thousand dollars anyway, without coming out of the general fund for it. So this, I mean, I...
Well, I think the intent here is...
We have no obligation.
Yeah. I think the intent here is whatever's left, whatever's left in the grant.
Yeah.
You would, you would make...
We, we signed that to the city of Star, for they pay all the match and we don't, we're, we're done with SDG two.
Yeah, and just like at the casino, you're out.
Yeah, we're looking for permission to transfer that seven hundred...
Plus or minus.
Yeah.
Whatever the number is.
My motion.
Six. We, we got a motion at a second. Any other discussion?
Uh, you and I can talk about this later, because I, I just didn't get my head wrapped around. There's a bigger picture with the sewer dynamic that I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, and legal review, yeah, to transfer that seven hundred.
Rob, I'm not sure where they're getting the balance of the money to do that, but I will admit it, but it'd be a fair assumption at that bottom that that decrease they passed the other day might be with the bonds, maybe where they're getting, you know? Now, now, I think there's been some discussion about OC that paying part of that cost, uh, as well. And, but, but I've not been a party though, so I don't know, I don't know what the split is or the shares are.
I, I guess if we didn't do something with it, we have to sit back. Those, those are just left over.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We were looking at, we were looking at what else we could do with money for the park. And, and quite frankly, we, we still got about a billion seven on SDG one that, that you don't have any match in there. Uh, uh, that, uh, uh, the ARC money is servicing that, your match. We're waiting on the, we gotta defend that plan for that, and we think we've got enough money to do everything we wanna do. And we, we, we were looking, we were looking for good projects, Mr. Williams, and the city says, we, we would like to do this, and we felt like it was a good project.
We've got a motion on, at a second on the table to move forward with, with this request pending legal review. Any other discussion? There's been motion by Supervisor Williams and second by Supervisor Little. Uh, Trainor, Trainor, sorry. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Get down. Y'all had a good time.
Hi.
And next on the agenda, we've got, uh, Cash Fest, the three by three of one. Uh, we've got a video teleconference presentation, uh, that we will now, uh, indulge in. Uh, Mr. Warren, if you don't mind, you can turn those lights off.
All right, Zach, you ready to go?
Okay, I appreciate it. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to join you on this meeting this morning and share a little bit about Cash Fest and our work in supporting counties across the nation in generating new, non-attached revenue through our partnership of NACO, the National Association of Counties. So my name is Zach Butler. I'm an account manager here at Three Plus One, and I've been honored to have several discussions with Mr. Trainer and Mr. Carpenter to show them the benefits of Cash Fest. It's our understanding that this is the next step in the process, and we're here to give a brief overview of Cash Fest to you all, and hopefully have enough time to answer some questions at the end. So I will now kick it over to my colleague Kevin DeBor to give a short introduction to Cash Fest and to answer the questions that you all may have. And I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much, and we'll keep it brief, because I know your schedule is very tight, and, uh, it looks like we're running behind as well. Um, as Zach alluded to, uh, Cash Fest in Three Plus One, uh, we're a cash and liquidity data company. Uh, we're partners with the National Association of Counties. Over the last ten years, we've helped generate over three point five billion dollars of new revenues. And the way we do that is by analyzing your all's cash and, um, find underperforming cash and using your investment policy, bring opportunities to the table that you may or may not be aware of. Um, we've had several conversations with Supervisor Trainer and the county board's trainer, uh, Mr. Carpenter, as well as its march, showing them the ins and the outs of Cash Fest, our, our data, our reporting, and how it's implemented and used. But at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that you have the data around your cash, increase transparency on what you're doing with your cash to your stakeholders. And at the end of the day, again, make sure that you're meeting and exceeding marketplace benchmarks when it comes to returns on your cash. We're not an investor, we're not a broker dealer, we don't touch your money. Again, we provide data, and we connect the dots behind the scenes, so it really makes your finance department more efficient. And at the end of the day, one of the main reasons why we are partners with the National Association of Counties and why we have eighteen other state partnerships, is that our service, if we can't show you a benefit, our service is free. Uh, we wanna make sure that you are not wasting your taxpayer dollars. We wanna be a revenue generating tool for you all in any event environment. And I believe, um, you all probably received, um, our one-page overview of Cash Fest, and probably you've seen different videos and testimonials. But to save you all some time, we'd like to open up questions. Um, would you like to be interested in some of the rest of that? So I'll turn it back over to you, Commissioner and Supervisor.
I, I think the biggest thing that interests me was this was a revenue generating opportunity. Of course, you've, you've had a chance to listen to our meeting this morning. I think you probably heard some of the dialogue, and we have a lot of needs here. And so with the climate that we're in right now, we're trying to find unique ways of generating revenue, uh, so we can address some of these needs. And I've been going to NACO for quite a few years, and I've watched this program, and I seem to think this program could be very beneficial to October County, but there's a lot of revenue out there I think that we could access, if we only knew how to access.
You're absolutely correct. And what our data is gonna tell you, and we're gonna be able to look at your banking relationships and how you're utilizing your banks. Um, we can benchmark your fees, your rates, and also the services you're receiving there. That'd be a great place to start. But what our data is also gonna tell you is how long your cash is available for. And if you know how long your, a dollar's available for, whether it has to be spent the day it comes in, or it doesn't need to be spent for six months, twelve, eighteen, or twenty-four months, there's different values to that as dollars as well, too, of using your investment policy. And the fact we've got a network of over four hundred banks that we work with, and they're basis, we can really benchmark what CDs and treasuries and different options there are for that cash, if the data says it could be put to work for longer term as well, too. So just very high level of counting generating new revenues by finding underperforming cash and putting it to work.
If, if you will, speak to the, the type of client you have as far as the size and scope of some of the county budget-wise.
Great question. So we work in thirty-nine different states across the U.S. Um, the entities that we serve, it's only the public sector. So we work with counties, towns, cities, authorities, school districts, um, higher institutions. But our smallest entity that we serve is a, a billion dollar budget. Our largest entity is Harris County, Texas, which is a seven billion dollar budget. And what we find is their needs vary by degree, not by kind. So it matter, you know, with our smaller entities, we're lower the finance team. And our larger entities, we're supplying the data and some recommendations, but they have forty-plus people on their team. So again, we, we fit a very different, different, there, too. But at the end of the day, this type of data analysis has never existed. We are a sole source, as far as we know, and the National Association of Counties knows, through a lot of due diligence, we are the only company in the country that does what we do.
This program is sponsored by the National Association of Counties, which we are a member of. It represents over three thousand and sixty-nine counties across America. And we pay a substantial fee to be a member of, of NACO. And I see this as a great return on our investment, should our board decide to pursue this relationship, because you're talking about bringing revenue in, and that's what we're looking for, especially in times like this. Uh, the revenue that we could generate could help offset, uh, some of the taxing responsibilities of the citizens of this county, and also help us to provide better service. So that's the main, my main goal in bringing you all in to talk to our board. So what I'll do, I'll yield right there. Some of the board members may have some questions.
You know I always have a question. Um, I was wondering, like, could you give us some examples of, like, what types of revenues and different things that you've been able to bring that other counties and cities have been able to invest their money in or do, you know? And, and the yields and stuff off of them?
Yeah, absolutely. So first and foremost, we look at your investment policy, and we compare that to, see what's in your investment policy and compare that to state local guidelines. So number one, that's your playbook, and we wanna make sure that you have all the different tools in the toolbox that your specific state allows. So typically, when we work with, in the thirty-eight states that we work in right now, treasuries, uh, CDs, commercial paper, uh, local government investment pools, if your state has one, those are the main vehicles which most counties are able to invest in. There are different nuances state by state, but using that as our framework, um, you know, we look at all state bank relationships. What are you earning at your bank? Some banks, the, the relationships are such that they pay really low interest, but they don't charge you fees. So we can go in and do analyses around that as well, too, and say, hey, if you were to charge fees, you know, what would that look like versus market competitive rates? Um, you know, so again, we, CDs are currently, state by state, bank by bank, are, are ranging in the high threes to mid-four percent ranges. Uh, local government investment pools, which I don't believe Mississippi has one, are in that middle four and a half range. That's really the catch. Banks across the board pay different things, so again, it's just a matter of benchmarking. But our, our goal is to meet and exceed marketplace benchmarks. And our benchmark is the, we use the thirty-day U.S. Treasury. And our goal is for our clients all to be meeting or exceeding that in any event environment. So during COVID, for those that were following their data, investing in fixed income and taking advantage of the different opportunities pre-COVID, we're earning over two percent when rates went to zero. Um, you know, now, you know, the, the benchmark is about three point nine percent, and most of our clients are earning on all of their cash across the board around that. That's our goal, is to meet that and exceed that in any marketplace, or any, any, uh, market environment. So hopefully that answers your question. It's not just about returns today, but it's also hedging against the future.
So you mentioned that, that, uh, primarily what y'all do is provide the data. You don't actually touch the, the funding, but you provide the, the data, uh, for decision-making. And I'm assuming you go in and, and review, uh, the entire financial structure, and then you, you, you make, you look at the data, you make recommendations on some things that we might be able to do to enhance our funding. But is that, is, is that where you stop then, after the recommendations? Then it's up to the county to implement, uh, those recommendations?
Great question. So yes, we invest, and we look at every transaction that flows through every one of your bank accounts, and we stress test that on a quarterly basis to understand how much cash the county actually has, how long it's available for. We do future cash flow forecasting as well, so each report will give you a six month, six month forward-looking forecast, and then we'll analyze what the data says, and we will come up with what we believe the top recommendations would be, the revenue generating and or, um, savings opportunities. We'll help with you and your team develop what next steps might have to take place, whether it's us organizing meetings, uh, whether it's us going to the market, to your current banks and, or other banks to bring back opportunities. But at the end of the day, correct, you all are in charge and making decisions. We don't touch your money, we don't move your money, but we'll work as an extension of your team to bring everything together. But at the end of the day, you all make the final decision. And again, our goal is to meet, exceed our fee each and every year. So again, if we cannot show you a benefit in our initial report, there's no fee for our service. And we will actually, on your behalf, be happy to write and press for this and publish that on your behalf, saying, an independent party came in, and our county is doing everything it possibly can to earn and save as much as possible.
So right now, we're, we're currently making about, what is it, three point eight eight?
Probably five.
Well, for our CD?
Uh, four point two six.
Four point, say again?
Four point two six.
Four point two six. So you said that your clients are making about three point nine, and then you're taking a fee out of it. So I'm trying to understand, you know, if we already making market rates and, and, and that kind of stuff, then why in the world would I wanna pay you a fee to help me figure out how to do it different? And I had a whole bunch of work to get you connected to all of my banking accounts and all that kind of stuff, and then... So I'm, I'm really struggling to kind of see the advantage. And what I'm seeing is a lot of work for very little gain.
I, I love that question, and that is a fantastic question. So first and foremost, our fee is a flat fee. So we don't make money off of your money. It's a flat fee based on your budget size, and that's how we can work consistently across the country. So we have a flat fee of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And while you might have a portion of your cash at four point two six percent, I, I reckon that's a very small percentage of your overall cash. When you're looking at cash at your bank, uh, your bank accounts, you're gonna analyze those. You probably, I believe you have about fifty to twenty different accounts that you have. I might, might be mistaken there, uh, but we're gonna take a look at those rates. And if you truly understand how much cash you have, and I'll share my screen with you here. I don't know if y'all can see it. Um, one second. Are you, are you able to see the screen, this output right here?
We can.
Yes.
So again, this entity is quite a larger than you all, we're gonna give you the idea. This entity, out of all of the cash positions, out of its bank, CDs, and every other dollar hit from late, it's seventy-two million dollars of cash. When we analyzed it and stress tested, we understood that the model says that only needs to keep seventeen million dollars of working capital at the bank. The dollars in the purple, that's where your CD is right now. I don't know how long your CD is, but again, it could be in any of these different buckets. But overall, when you look at this, we, you know, this only like seventy-two million dollars over twelve-month period, just for, we'll call it seventy, just to keep the numbers, twenty million you could be kept at the bank, leaving fifty million to invest. And I'll be, uh, limitless, but if we did your data analysis, we're gonna have quite a bit more than that, that CD that could be put to work. So by benchmarking these rates, having understanding of how long this cash is available for, we can work with you all to start putting more cash to work. So when interest rates do get cut, you know, that four point two six percent, that is a genius move. Uh, you ever did that? That's fantastic. Our job is to continue to find more cash that can be put to work, but also analyzing your banking relationships, too. We'll rebuild the market and find different opportunities for you all, and can have meaningful benefits. Again, you work at one bank, but we can go to all the different banks in the state that your investment policy allows you to, compile that information based on that data, and bring opportunities to you all to earn and save more. Maybe it doesn't make sense that a twelve-month, uh, treasury, uh, three point nine two percent. Maybe there's a good bank that's offering, again, a three-month T dollar at four point two, or a six-month CD at four point one. But having that data can be meaningful and knowing what's out there at all times, that's what we do. We continue to bring the opportunities to you all, so you can leverage, again, the data here. And we have a lot of other different data that we show, and these are the two easiest things to look at. But again, we've written all that to you, consulting with you, to make sure that you're earning and saving as much as possible. So again, going back to three point nine six versus your four point two six, where to find more cash you could be putting to work, we're gonna look at how you're utilizing your banks and the products that you're using at the banks, and making sure we can help streamline and, and maximize what you have. So high level there, but also in the weeds. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
And I still have a question, and, and I'm certain that other people have answered this, but when you keep, uh, referencing, stress test your money, what, what does that mean?
Great question. So we run it through a lot of different scenarios and analyses. So from the moment it comes into your bank account to the moment it leaves, we run a whole bunch of what-if scenarios. So we can come up with different models. So if that dollar came in, uh, you know, like historical data, if it, it happened to come in a week later, or it got spent two weeks sooner. Again, try to run the dollars through scenarios to determine how long the dollar's really available for. And why that's important is if you know that dollar needs to be spent statistically the next day, what is value to that dollar? But if you know that dollar doesn't need to be spent for a month, six months, twelve months, or eighteen months, that dollar's worth different, different amounts to different entities. So that's how we come up with our, uh, our different models, and not like, don't you invest, but also also to benchmark like that dollar's available for, and how much it's, market's willing to pay for. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Yep, I appreciate that. Again, we live in this world, so I apologize for, uh, getting stuck in the weeds.
I, I just have a question. I, I understand that you're not, uh, tapping with our cash money. I, I understand that you're not uh, tapping with our cash money or funds. You only telling us how much funds is available to be invested without putting the county under a stress and paying its bills. So whatever money we can, we have available, we have available that we can invest, then I guess cash bets would be letting us know how much fund that we have that can actually invest.
That is absolutely correct. And you know, again, another thing to note as the entities that use our data and they start investing more in that purple area that I, you know, showed you, uh, not one entity has had to liquidate an asset to make payroll or AP or anything in that nature. It's a very conservative model, but on average, our entities earn about three percent more year over year by following the data.
Supervisor Carver, do you have anything to, to add?
Uh, no, sir, this time I'm just going to count off the CAO and all fans, uh, folks down.
Okay. Anything else coming from any member of the board? Board attorney, administrator?
I'd like to make a, make a recommendation to motion that we just take this presentation under consideration and acknowledge the presentation. And allow the administrators and the parties that be to do a little bit more due diligence.
I like that. Second, we've got a motion and a second to acknowledge the presentation and uh, continue with our due diligence. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes you down today. Thank you all so much for, for presenting to us.
Four one.
Four one.
Uh, I'm sorry, motion passes four one. Uh, thank you all so much for, for giving us this presentation this morning and I'm sure we'll be in continued uh, communication.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda, we've got our county engineer, Mr. Pritchard. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. So, I'm an update for y'all as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And a little bit of this later.
Yes, sir.
Wayne, did you have an opportunity to send out these book tabs?
I did summarize in their uh, package what, what the little bids came in at, but I did not.
I'll pass it around as well. This is bid received on Black Jack Road. And this project essentially picks up where the Bummer Black Jack's project from Vetsville, quit at Bardwell and goes east to the church. They're about, uh, a low bidder with Gregory Companies doing business is Mercury Payton in an amount of one million, one hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred forty six dollars.
I make a motion to award the bid for Black Jack Road project, Mercury Payton.
Motion by supervisor trainer, accepted by supervisor Williams, and bid be awarded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes you down.
I believe we know. All right, second, same day, which is bid for several roads in District Two. That included Bethesda, we call it Camp Airport Road South, Camp Airport Road North, Paradise Road, Rice Road, Rock Hill Road West, Sand Creek Road and Willie Road. I'll pass them down. And so it's being passed, and we'll tell you we had four bidders, pretty good bid pool. They've gone from a local contractor, came from Corinth, came from Laurel and came from Tennessee. So we had pretty good interest in the project. Summary of the bids is on the right. Apparently a little bidder is Pittman Construction out of Corinth, Mississippi, in an amount of two million, six hundred twenty four thousand, seventy three dollars and eighty thousand.
Motion to award.
Second.
It's been motioned by supervisor Williams, accepted by supervisor trainer to award uh, low bid to Pittman.
I'll ask how you're getting on the basis.
Uh, what we plan to do is we're going to utilize, I want to make a, an amendment to that motion. Uh, because Mr. Pritchard is working on some bids from Clifford and Kelly. Uh, not, not Clifford, Clifford and Jordan.
And Jordan.
Right. And so when those bids come in, what I wanted to do, I wanted to, to give those particular roads priority because of the emphasis that's been put on those roads. And then the balance of the money that's left that we have, we're going to select from what we have bid. And that'll keep us under another money gap.
Pick off the menu so to speak to get your balance squared away.
But I got to get this, this.
Yeah, I mean, you have a good deal of money, but not quite this much.
Right. So, so what we'll do, once we get the bid back from, from Jordan and, and Clifford, then whatever that amount is, we're going to subtract that amount from the amount we got allocated. And then we're going to pick from this list to utilize rest of the money, which we won't be able to do all of it, but at the same time.
We own the same chief, but that's what I was worried about is, okay, when the contractor, so, so did you, are we making this motion to award the bid?
Once, once he gives me the amount, we can back out the amount for Clifford and Jordan and we can award what's left off his bid.
We will, contractually, we would have to award this contract.
The entire thing and then they go.
I would have to have a conversation with Pittman to see if they would do a deducted change order at a later date. And that would be done by change order. I don't know, as I said here today, whether they're willing to do that or not and have that conversation. I have had conversations with them that they were okay with their bid. Because they were four hundred and something thousand dollars below and they, they were fine. But I would have to give them a noticeable award, award in the entire contract. And then at some point in time, to do what supervisor trainer was like, then we would have to do a deducted change order if necessary to take that away from the contract.
And if they refuse to do a deducted change order.
And they're under contract for the entire two point six.
Now, a portion of this with Rice Road, a portion of that, what you and I talked about, you, your partnership on that.
So what, do, do we need to slow up a little bit then and, and uh, award this contingent upon you speaking with this company to see if they would be willing? Because if we awarded today, we're under contract and, and we've got a, we, we've got to acknowledge that contract. And if they decide they don't want to make changes, this is what we've got.
That's correct. And if I have the conversation today, I don't know if I'm talking about one road or two roads, they're taking out half the job or what. That, all that would do would be let them move their bonding, their insurance, get those things in place so it can go on your contract.
Sometimes we give a different, uh, they, a different bid amount based on the quality of work.
Bid is good for forty five days. Now, in the middle of this conversation, we, we've got Jordan and Clifford ready to stake on the ground. And there's really no existing right away on those roads. So we're going to set the stakes where we need to work to get grading and drainage and all those same kinds of building. And I think first step allocated is going to be, or if they're sticking, it's going to be willing to let us do that work.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'd always make contact with them and that's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, there's some of it's in little wheel charters up in driveways, up in this and that. So there's going to be some work limits that's going to have to be agreed, but we can, we can do it.
And, and, and the board is ready to go forward and I'm, I just, I just want us to be aware, if we approve this today, this is the contract that we're on and we just talked about having the funding to do all of this. I'm, I'm just, I mean, I know we.
And, and you have them under the package. Just the two roads included. That's all your general conditions, contract language and whatever. The board has the right to reduce the scope of work. Now, whether it's cricket to let him bid eight roads and give him one or not, that's, you know, that's another conversation. But if, if that's the way you'd like to do, I would like an opportunity to talk to Pittman and tell him what we're doing. Tell him there's three more roads coming behind this and see if they're okay with that. I, I, I'd hate to start a project with one of them.
I, I would you prefer this be, they would say remove forward and not stopping you from what needs, work needs to be done, but we're also giving my board some room to maneuver if they need to.
Um, at this point, I think I understand what you're trying to do. I would just take it under advisement. Wayne, how much time do we have for the next board meeting?
Uh, we'll meet again, but we got a couple of meetings as far as budgets concerned, which we might take this matter of then. But if the board meeting needs to be set, assuming they'd set it September the second, I'm not sure about that.
I, that'll give me time to have a conversation with them. And also give us time to put definitions of when Clifford and Jordan can actually be bid.
That's the first.
Very good possibility that they'll be interested in those together.
Oh, yeah.
Two, you know? So I, I think at this point, just keep them under advisement and let me have those conversations.
So moved.
It's been motioned by supervisor, we, we didn't carry that last motion to award, right? Okay.
We just take them on their back.
Okay. It's been motioned by supervisor trainer, accepted by supervisor Williams to take uh, the bids under uh, consideration. All in favor? Motion, motion passes you down.
And what I want.
Does Black Jack Road with District is it in?
Now, these are District Two roads.
Well, Black Jack's five.
Black Jack is in five.
Black Jack is five.
Black Jack is five. Okay. If, if that's all the conversation on, on that one, I would like to go back to Black Jack Road. And uh, make some comments on that. Uh, we do want to award that bid uh, to Black Jack Road, but I want it also, they are probably doing some similar type of work on Bluff Lake. Similar work on Bluff Lake. And want to know whether or not Mercury would also take on Bluff Lake as a project also. We, we would have to estimate a quantity for them after we put them on the contract and then do that as a change order to their contract. And I've got that on my list of things.
Okay.
And, and while we're at that point, I will tell you all, collectively, y'all have given us quite a few roads to look at and do rough estimates. If there's one in particular that you're not sure, um, got on my list, let me know. I, I want to go through each one of them individually right now that you've asked me to estimate or look at or go to. But if there's one in particular that you're not sure you put on my radar, feel free to let me know. We're, we're doing that now. And Mr. President, we do have funds and disavowed to be able to uh, to fund Bluff Lake.
What was this? You on Bluff Lake? You should, yes, sir, after Black Jack, you should have about a half a million dollars. I'm, I don't, but I don't know how much Bluff Lake will cost.
Well, it should have about a million now. It was three million altogether. So we should have about a million.
We could talk, we could talk about it. Yeah, I, I'm sure this Pritchard would have a bid.
That's an additional one, I don't know.
No, you have to bid. If, if it's a similar scope, if it's a similar scope of work, I base a bare overlay stripe that you have under contract, within, within limits, you can award additional roads. If it's similar, I can't reach out there and do a totally different scope of work and add it to it. But if it's similar overlay this same thing in District Two, if, if we award District Two and supervisor trainer says, I'd like to go work on this road too while I got them in there. And they're willing to do that and it's similar to what we've got bid, then we could do it.
This, this seem to be similar work.
It is. It, it would be.
So we can have Black Jack and then we need to advise each other.
Bluff Lake. We don't have an estimate on Bluff Lake.
No, I'll have to come to you after our award and, and Rob not to cry, cry, yeah. But when I send them this notice of award, I typically send them a copy of the board order that says we're awarding. So as soon as you can get that to me, it's better. I have referenced one in the past and just said in the meeting of August eighteenth, the board elected to award, but I do need to come on board order at some point back. While we're.
The board members are working hard and trying to get our citizens taken care of. I think the bid five away four to get this work done.
On, on a similar note, remind you that we are taking bids on September the fourth for Maven Vale and for Rock Hill East. Supervisor Little, uh, here's our repair plan for Sanders. You want me to give it to you? You want me to send it straight to the waterway management district?
Can I have a detail, any highlights?
I can leave my little plan. You want this copy? That doesn't bear my style, yes, but Dave was still wet, I couldn't stand it. We held, I was burnt, we had uh, plans in hand inspection on my Ogden Bridge with the LSBP project. I expect to get permission to advertise that any day. Uh, new light roads.
Supervisor Carver?
Yes. We've got that package ready. I'll be ready to advertise it this afternoon.
Get four.
All right. The small drainage structures, we've looked at, I'll say all of them, all of them we know about. And we're putting that date on the sheet for you now. Yep, young lady working on, putting those corners, whatever. I need a board order on Ogden LSBP job to allow the contractors to accept the salvage of that.
So moved.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little, that we allow the contractor to accept the salvage uh, on the bridge job.
That's Ogden Road LSBP. Rob, I'll get you that.
Forgive my ignorance, but what does that mean?
It means any salvageable material, whether it's been the steel, the garden rail, anything that's left when he demo's that old bridge belongs to him. Belongs to the contractors.
And why we're there? Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, uh, all in, uh, any other discussion? All the trainers, uh, motion passes you down.
Okay, we just completed it, but now this is different though because Crawford Road on State Eighteenth, right, or the same road?
It is the State Eighteenth, please.
Okay, we just completed Crawford Road three years. And there's some bridge pilings that I've been approached by uh, a member of the public and they're interested in those bridge pilings and I talked to Mr. Pritchard about it because we wanted the impression, we didn't know whether in the contract it belonged to the county or belonged to the contract, but he discovered it belonged to the county.
And my project, that, that salvage belongs to the county.
Right. And in lieu of our history of having bridge gate, my suggestion is I'd like to declare that, that those pilings circle and give the public, you know, the, the opportunity to bid on uh, let's say it, with Crawford Road Bridge.
As it stands right now, the, the demo will be picked up by the county, put on the county yard as long as deals.
And see, we don't need it. And people want it and I think the fairest way to do it is just let them bid on it. And then we make a little money off of that sale.
Now, that's not the LS, that's not the, this is a different job.
This is Crawford, this is Crawford, this is what we just completed. Right. And so what's happening is that they're laying out there now, I mean, you can't just, we have to have a track or to move them. But there's somebody that wants them and to be fair with everybody, let's just bid them out whoever wants them, they bid on it, we sell it to the high bidder. And we get them moving. Cause we bring them back to the yard, we're going to be stacking stuff in our way. We can't use it.
We, we could inventory what's out there and they won't give you a list if it's this many veins, this size, this long, whatever, and y'all can advertise.
Can we leave them on site as opposed to?
Right. And see, cause if we have to go get them, yeah, we can go get them and take them to West Point to sell. Right, and see, because if we have to go get them, yeah, we can go get them and take them to West Point to salvage, but it gonna cost them. It gonna cost us five hundred dollars to go get them and take them to salvage. And we might make six hundred dollars that, that salvage, y'all.
I'm, I'm just wondering from a safety point, just leave it on site?
Leave it on site and whoever gets them, they, they, they'll be responsible for moving.
I can leave it on site for a little while, but I'll have to finalize the job out to State A for N L Carson. And when we do our final inspection, they would need to see it.
And two of the property owners that are there are interested, and I think it'll be a good gesture because they bid, donate the county the property. We can't just give them the material, but if they bid on it and get the high bid, then they can buy from it. And we, and we've covered all of, because in the past, you know, you would think that when they give us property, we can just give them old bridge parts. But we found out it don't work like that sometimes.
Bridge gate is close, eh?
I think we remember that.
What y'all referring to is the bridge gate, I- The problem-
I'll, I'll figure it out.
The problem comes in when individual see these pieces of cars laying out there, they want them, the supervisors want to accommodate them, but it's state property, so we-
Can't give it away.
Well, if you can be a good inventory, I'm sure we can put it into paper, put it on the website.
We just follow the process.
That's, that's the reason, we're doing it competitively and everything and leave it. That's the reason movement follows, we, we put a note on the plan now that that salvage belongs to the contractor. And if an individual wants to cut a deal with a contractor or whatever, that's him, and we're out.
Motion by supervisor trainer, uh, second by supervisor Little, that we, uh, declared as surplus and, uh, put it out of bids. And sell it to the highest bidder off the Crawford Road Bridge. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous.
I need one more on Ogden Road Bridge LSVP. Again, Rob, I'll get you that fifty-three, whatever number right now. But I need an order from the board, three inches deep, three inch asphalt paving on the bridge end at the project completion.
So moved.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams. Any other discussion?
I'd, I'd like a motion being LSVP will not let us do bridge end paving. So I'm trying to leave the graves three inches low on either side of the bridge, go ahead and set the base up. But for me to do that and State A left me to leave those graves low, I need a board order that says y'all gonna come back and pay. So that allows the, the approaches on the bridge.
Write that down, key.
So it's, it'll be three inches of hot mix asphalt on either end on the approaches. We did that on Morgantown Road, but that wasn't under State A, we just had it rolled up in the land, we go get, we get out. This is State A job, so I need the order to last. That's Ogden.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, unanimous.
Okay, so I got District two bids going on, advised on, I'll have a conversation with Pittman, was on award Blackjack. We will be working order, change order for Bluff Lake on that same job. Anything else for me?
I guess we need to have further communication. But the best use of, of taxpayers' dollars, um, the removal of trees and, and, and the fencing on Blackjack. And Blackjack on, that's gonna cost quite a bit of money to be able to do that. Do you have any figures on that?
I do. We have that, we have that item, that's the end of bid.
That's for the, uh-
That was, that, it was actually very cheap. But it was nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And we can do that or not do that?
Well, why don't we not do that and, and later we can ask the county? The county does, does a real good job. I, you should see some of the work that they do with removing trees and establishing fences also. So I think that's a better use of, uh, taxpayers' dollars.
So once again, what we'll do is award the entire contract and do a change order the same day, we'll take the pension out.
Take the pension out.
Rob, that makes sense to you?
It does, but are, are we gonna gain? That does allow us to have a decrease to do with the private-
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Is it be a daily change order for the port to, uh?
Okay. You, you just answered what, what I'm thinking.
We, we just have a lot of need out there, a lot of pavement need to be done. And, and I think the county can do a much better job than they can do.
We also prepared, just so you know. We did a song on. Because each one of these District two roads and whatever body did on the listed items, if you wanna take a look at that and see how they failed. And I think, Wayne, I'll just email that to you.
Please do, and I'll, I mean, supervisor, I'll get you a copy of it and drop it in your box if that'll help you.
But you, you can save what they bid on, what they bid on sale, I can get, what they bid on-
You'd like a copy, supervisor Carver? Absolutely.
Well, now, since you mentioned that, Mr. Pritch, so you bid it this as a package, but they bid it on the roads individually?
That's correct.
Well, why can't we go back and cherry picking award, award roads individually?
You can after the fact. If I, if I try to do that right now, I'll have a bitter say, but if I'd have known you weren't gonna do vice roads, I'd bid different. So I need to put them on the contract under, actually bid that.
Right, because you can, I can cherry pick it, I can lower that two point six by something.
You could.
Because, you know, you can give, uh, two, or one, two, three, you can give three of the roads to Pittman and give, like, give, you know-
Over two. No, I can't, I can't split.
Well, see, that's what I was saying.
No, well, I misunderstood you, I can't split a war. Yeah.
You have to award it to the winner and then go back and pick the roads.
Because that's how it was put out for bid.
That's right. And, and it was single package.
It would be a chapter in the State Ogden book.
Well, but I mean, you're looking at the different quantities and everything and, you know, hey, it does save, it saves some, I mean, but it's not enough, probably, it's not enough to give the savings.
Like, they, what they would do is they would tell you, look, I bid my mobilization, which is the catch-all number for all of it, based on eight roads, not one road. And, and y'all will see big spreads in that number, but that's where they're putting their insurance, that's where they're putting the special piece of equipment they thought they had. That's where they're putting this and that. And that's where they're getting greedy, if they want to be greedy, I said, take a chance, I'm gonna load that item up right there. So, that, you know, don't, don't panic if you see one guy fifty thousand dollar mobilization, another one at a hundred and fifty, because you just really don't ever know what goes in there.
But to my knowledge, it would be the first time that this was, this, this contract would be awarded, a contract that I give out there. Unless they operate on a different name?
No, that, that will be the first time. I will tell you, we, we do have experience, quit the engineering with that contractor in Carver. They built a large lumber mill with a site contractor up there that we were doing testing and inspection, whatever. Soil sweeping that, they had baiting, they had all these things in it, we had no issue. And I did contact Pittman because there was a discrepancy in the bid.
Right.
And asked them, hey, y'all check your numbers, y'all look at that, make sure you knew it, they reported back, they knew it, and they looking forward to working with it.
Anything else my county needs to hear?
Uh, I believe-
Bridge is supposed to be for Ogden Road Bridge.
Select.
And bridge is supposed to be.
Ogden Road. Yes, Ogden Road. And I'd be, I'm, what I want to do is see this leave down three inches on both ends and let the county do the bridge end paving.
And you gonna coordinate, I'm assuming, oh, well, we won't open it till they get it done, is that how it works?
Correct.
You're not gonna tear the frame out of somebody's car?
No, and if it's, I mean, the gold's under, ready for traffic, traffic, when we can't do paving, we'll just slope the gravel, stone, everything up to the bridge where they can track it, come back, click it out, and pay it. I'm just trying to leave it low and save a little money and not waste it too.
Crawford Road official?
Not yet. Leader of Drive Three.
Motion by supervisor Little, uh, deduction for the tree, you mean, the fencing on Blackjack Road.
I think he said he had to make, go and make, make an, a, a amendment to that contract before, right? He, he was talking about removal of the fencing and the trees, but you award the whole contract-
We'll award the whole contract and I'll have a change order that will take the fencing out and possibly add Bluff Lake in. One would take out, one would add to.
That would be done by change order.
Thank you everything, you did a good job.
Anything else for, for our county administrators?
Stretch us out, we, we need one.
I mean, county.
All right, anything else for me? All right.
Motion, motion taken now.
So moved.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Trainer. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes, unanimous. Next, we've got our fire service coordinator, Mr. Patrick Warren. Good morning, sir.
I'll let you know that, you want me to email it to District two? You don't want to say it. I need to stand on it.
Assorted road. He's a chick.
Could be renting that machine for checking.
He's a chick.
Well, you know, we actually, we actually have a lot of, a lot of jobs that we have to get.
We've, we've got our fire force there, uh, with the morning. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, just to give everybody an update, we've made a lot of progress here. I'm just gonna go back a little bit, we've made a lot of progress here in the county, this, this update in our, uh, good fashion, communication system. Uh, and we're gonna be transitioning to the miss man radio system, uh, which will be an improved communication system. Uh, with that being said, uh, in the past, what we've done with our, uh, with our truck radios, we've been taking our, whenever we replace truck, we take the old radio out of the truck and put it in a new truck. Well, those are outdated and they won't work with our U M S M radio system. Uh, so today I'm here to ask that you, uh, purchase some new radios for, mobile radios for trucks.
Second. There, there's been motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trainer, that we approve the purchase of new radios by, by, uh, by our department's trucks. Any other discussion?
Yeah, um, I guess I want to know too, if that's in your budget, in your budget already.
Well, listen, I'm on this one, Randy, what do you have to mention?
Yeah, totally.
Okay. And I'd like to go with the low bid here.
Your call, Simon.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Patrick. Is there, is there any reason that we would have an issue with, uh, you are people doing any kind of things behind control of that line? If you think of the thing, Howard, that won't work on time, you can explain to them.
The next on the agenda, we've got, uh, Sheriff Parker, uh, Captain Warren, good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'd like permission to enter into an agreement with FY twenty-six, uh, DUI alcohol grain for twenty thousand dollars.
This is the annual grant.
Yes, sir.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, unanimous.
Sean, what was the name of the grant yet?
Next on the agenda, we've got Justice Court, our county administrator is here on behalf of Shalonda, uh, our Justice Court clerk, Shalonda Sykes.
Uh, thank you. You should have in your packet a summary of what, uh, Ms. Sykes is asking for. Um, we've looked through this, it, it seems to be pretty standard. It's something that would approve by legislature, it's an additional fee, uh, as it relates to, to, when somebody has a case, you charge them an additional dollar and that covers the destruction of the, all of the documents after it's reached its, um, limited time where you have to hold on to those documents. And it's just a small increase in a fee, subject to y'all's, you know, question, the approval, she just needing a formal approval on this.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous. Now, we have our road department, uh, county administrator on behalf of our road manager, Mr. Victor Doc.
Mr. Collins is, um, out, as many of you know, and Keith may could give us an update on his health and well-being. I saw him last week, uh, not to disclose any medical information, but he's not available, uh, for this meeting today. Uh, he asked that I present on his behalf, uh, two project quotes. Um, one is for retaining wall at three and eight Valley Hill Circle, I think that's the one we looked at a few months ago. Uh, he has received the, the quotes on that, uh, because it did exceed five thousand dollars, he had to get two quotes. And so therefore, those, those, uh, quotes, one from your friendly craftsman and the other from Simon Construction Company are in your packet. Um, I think we're gonna have to vote on these separately, so if we wanna address that one.
Where the hide not pull that off? Your friendly man craftsman is the lowest bid on that.
Your friendly craftsman is the lowest bid. Well, then let me try and explain to you, and I apologize, maybe I missed it copying all the package or something.
Let me say this, and I hope you don't mind, uh, I hope y'all will pray for our county administrator. He lost his mother, uh, over the weekend, I don't think he was even funeralized yet. So, we, we commend him and thank him for even being here, here today. So, if he missed a couple of things, we, we certainly will understand and thank him.
Sure. I, I think the motion we approved and accepted low bid on the retaining wall.
Okay. We'll send it down. Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Williams, that we accept a low bid on the retaining wall. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Chair, not will be in-
And that amount, what I packeted, what's the amount?
The amount is six thousand, three hundred dollars. And the address on that is three eight eight Valley Hill Circle.
All in favor? I think, motion passes, unanimous.
The second project on the list is less than five thousand dollars, it does not require two quotes. The address on that is one twenty-seven Stedman Lane. And, uh, they just happened to replace the carpet out there and they gonna need some concrete work to do that. Two thousand, three hundred dollars is this amount.
Make a motion we accept a low quote.
Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Before we move off of the road department, uh, supervisor Howard, did Keith, did you have anything to add, uh, that we, I know you're here from the road department and I don't wanna-
We have, uh, Steve Montgomery's asked before, cover on O twelve to access his property.
Make a motion we authorize the carpet installation for Steve Montgomery on O twelve.
Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Little. All in favor?
That's all I have, unless, unless any other supervisor have.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Wondering when all that list, uh, gone? I feel like myself, worried.
You know, you have, you have, um, you have the list of road jobs that are happening, stuff, that road listing. I did not know, and I needed Silver Ridge and then that stuff that I had. At least, um, started or could start that later.
Uh, or paving?
They're supposed to start that project, fixing that road out there.
Uh, we're, we're- But right now, we're still, still, with the shoulders on it.
How long has that been taken off to do that?
Well, we started Monday and, uh-
Last month, that's my thought. I was, I was asking for them to double check the shoulder work on some of the wood.
Yeah. It's, it's taken a while, because after it rains, it kind of rusts the material and it doesn't cooperate in, in machines, we have to, you know.
We need to get that shoulder work done on the truck. We need to get that shoulder work done on the front, unless it's some little bit short road or something.
Yeah, that's a long road, and it's, that's just one side we still over.
Anything else, uh, Assistant Road Manager?
I, I do have one thing to, to add, uh, just wanna call your attention to a cover request for twelve seventy-two Ridge Road. Twelve seventy-two Ridge, uh, that has previously been, would that have a dry ramp? If the dry ramp is not really working.
I was trying to talk with the, with the resident, and he seemed to think that, that there was, there's a cover under there somewhere.
Something under there, okay.
And so, uh, once we start digging, then we would, we would know if there's a cover under there, or we would just make it on a dry ramp, or put it to cover. Right now, it doesn't show any resemblance of a cover, but he said that there was a cover under there somewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Anything else?
I have two.
Go ahead, supervisor.
Um, and I'd like to question Mr. Mr. about both these, nobody's got, first one's gonna be a, um, cover request for Mr. Lloyd Duberry.
Second?
Nineteen ninety, North County Line Road.
Okay, motion by supervisor Carver, second by supervisor Trainor, uh, to install a cover for Mr. Lloyd Duberry at nineteen ninety-nine?
Nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety, Duberry Road?
North County, North County Line Road.
Okay, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Um, the second one is Mr. Steve Montgomery, three five, yeah, three five O, three fifty O, highway twelve.
We've, we've already got that one, so.
Okay, 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 thank y'all.
Okay. Anything else, uh, Assistant Road Manager?
Did we vote on the twelve seventy-two Ridge, or is that, is that already?
Uh, it's always, it's in progress.
I said that, that, I mean, that's, that's basically routine, I'm sorry, doesn't require a authority on that, y'all can't hold on. It's basic routine work, you know, we change the covers out, it's, it's basically routine, right?
Gotcha.
But, but it is, it is already.
Gotcha.
Motion to acknowledge our road manager report?
Okay.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're now down to our county administrator, Mr. Carr.
Thanks, supervisor, um. For, for your consideration, I got, uh, ten items, one of which is gonna be a walk-on, I'll show that to the end. Uh, the first item on the, on the list, in my report, is simply a, an acknowledgement from Starlock to the Hall Consolidated School District, uh, for their FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six head of law of tax request. Uh, I provided a, a summary of that request and a copy of what they provided to me in your package, I hope that that one made it in the package.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Maybe I just skipped those two items there, and the rest of it, we should be good.
Yes, second. Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
The second item on my list is, uh, we have discussed this briefly in previous meetings, I, I had told you that I was, was gonna have a, uh, a meeting with Ms. Whitney Cox from the, uh, Community Counseling Services to, uh, see if they were interested in trying to help us spend this opioid money, um, and so I did have that meeting, she is interested in pursuing, uh, some kind of partnership, uh, so that they can help us spend that money, we, we've kinda come up with a game plan. So with that said, I would like for the board to approve me, uh, to continue those discussions and to, uh, develop a, um, a plan we, in, in concert with Ms., uh, Ms. Cox, in order to spend that small amount of money, it's not a tremendous amount of money, a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, but we don't need to let it sit there when we can actually do something to help folks who are struggling with addiction and that kind of thing.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Um, the next, the next two items are, uh, regarding two invitations for bids that, uh, closed this past week. Uh, one is for the courthouse chiller, the bid, uh, came in, we only had one bidder, uh, we had initially asked for a stainless steel, uh, chilling tower. Uh, during the mandatory site visit, we had a big discussion, we only had one bidder show, there was a large discussion about changing that from a stainless steel, uh, chilling tower to a galvanized, and that the galvanized would last thirty years and it would outlast the current air conditioning system that we have anyway, so why spend an extra forty thousand dollars on a stainless steel, uh, chiller? But the, the, we gonna get that work done between December and March of this year, that chiller is that in the light, we, we really, I, I'm, you know, keeping my fingers crossed that we gonna make it through the summer without any problems, right? Uh, so, but we right there, and so far, that thing's chugging along, so we all close to the end of the summer, don't jinx us. So, with your approval, we will, uh, issue, award this contract in the amount of ninety-one thousand dollars to, uh, Upchurch, um, Services LLC.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all so much. Long time away.
The, the next item, Sharon, for your information, is as we get a little bit closer to the, to the win, to the winter time, we gonna i- issue an invitation for bid on the boiler. And then that would take place next summer, while we running the new air conditioner chiller, we will replace the boiler, which controls the heat, but that's the plan. Um.
Thank you so much.
Next item up, we've already discussed this a little bit, Mr. Austin Chek was, uh, present, he talked about his concerns about the location of one of the sirens out at Opto versus Bepel. Uh, award for bid on, uh, those six sirens that were sirens, I don't know how to pronounce that, that sounds like, uh, the ladies out in the ocean calling your name, you know? Uh, the six sirens, um, the, at two hundred point six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, uh, that is a federal grant. Uh, there were some minor problems with this bid, uh, that I'm gonna have to cure, but it's so minor that I can waive them and, and reach out to the bidder. It was only one bidder, so competitively, we not having any, any competition problem that may result in some legal challenges.
I, I don't know if, uh, EMA Director was here doing that conversation about moving one of the, uh, alert sirens?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, okay, good, yeah, yeah.
I, I'd like, um, the Secretary of Commerce said, I don't think it'll be an issue with it, it's just more or less when you start changing the paperwork, it tends to be a little bit longer than usual, but we can definitely take a look.
The certification of components.
Yes, he was missing, he was missing a couple of small items that I felt was satisfactory to waive, especially given the fact that we didn't have any other bidder. So it's not like a competitive, uh, disadvantage there. So with your approval, I will award that contract, uh, in the amount of two hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars to, who was it? Precision Communications.
Motion by supervisor, uh, Trainor, second by supervisor Williams, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
The, uh, next couple of items on the agenda are regarding some ordinances that you, um, that this board, in its wisdom, had, uh, decided to put out for public review. And, uh, that time period has passed, uh, we made two notices in the paper, we hung those, we hung the, the ordinances out on the website, uh, for public review. The first ordinance that's on the agenda for adoption at this point is the Public Meetings and Records Ordinance. There are no changes to that from the first time that you had an opportunity to review that, we did not get any recommendations from, from the public regarding that, this, uh, ordinance. So, subject to your questions, uh, I would ask that you adopt the Public Meetings and Records Ordinance.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trainor, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
The second item on, or the next ordinance that was also, uh, passed at the same time that this one was, put out for public review a- and subsequently hung on the website, um, there are, there is a recommendation for change, um, in reviewing, uh, some information. Supervisor Williams asked a very, uh, a very good question when this ordinance was presented to the board for, uh, first review. And it caused me to go back and do a pretty extensive review of the law, try to get an understanding of, um, the termination and, and disciplinary authority as it relates to the county and county government. Uh, there was some language in nineteen dash two dash nine that, that stated something to the effect that the county administrator has the authority to discipline terminated employees that he's authorized to employ without approval by the board. Supervisor Williams' question was, why do you think that they put that into the law that way? It's, it's a quandary, right? I didn't have the answer, but it caused me to wanna go back and try and understand what possibly could have caused the legislature to write it this way. Um, and in so doing, I got to really looking at the disciplinary and termination authority that was outlined in the board. What I came to discover was that the way that ordinance is, was currently written at the time that it was presented, would provide an opportunity for legal challenge by employees that were terminated. And right now, we got too many legal challenges or too many EEOC challenges at this point, so I didn't wanna craft an ordinance that would create more opportunity for challenge. And so, it, with that said, I, I made some adjustments to the ordinance, and what I did was, is in, in, um, section, uh, eleven, I think, or, or paragraph eleven, um, and thirteen, I changed it to read, uh, changed it from reading the appointing authority to read the elected official or department head has the responsibility and authority to discipline and, uh, terminate. And the reason for that is because if you go back up into the section for appointment, that section would, would indicate that the Board of Supervisors has the authority to approve appointments. And what I didn't want happening was it to be misconstrued that the Board of Supervisors is then in fact the appointing authority and then every disciplinary action, every termination has to come to this board to be adjudicated. And that's, that's what we're, I, I don't think we want that. Now, there will be a grievance process, if somebody's wrongfully disciplined, wrongfully terminated, and that grievance process will ultimately end under the authority of this board. But from just a routine matter, we did not want to give somebody the right to challenge based on due process, that, hey, you fired me, even though I did something terrible, you didn't have the authority to fire me, that authority rests with the board, therefore, that was an illegal termination. And so that's what I'm trying to fix here.
It balances out the two, where if, if there is a grievance process, it's proper for its board, you can't, it doesn't need to be both, you don't need to fire them and then the grievance process comes before them. That's, that's the easiest.
That's the way we've been doing it all the time.
Yes, sir, I, I believe it is, I think that.
We've been doing it that way all the time, they're coming for the board as a payroll change. Uh, we, we normally vote on it and move it on.
It, it, we, we vote on it in order to spread it upon the minutes.
Spread it upon the minutes is the reason.
But it's not, it's not the same as the authority to discipline or terminate, we just simply spread it upon the minutes. So, uh, I provided you with a white paper and executive summary of these changes, I hope that it's been, and supervisor, you, you picked up your packet before I had that white paper. I thought I had brought.
Yeah, you, you gave us, you gave, you put one in the.
Okay, good. Um, so, that was, that was my attempt to answer your question from last meeting, because I didn't have a good answer, I wasn't satisfied with it, and you asked a very good question that made me wanna know why.
Right, well, we do it that way all the time, like you say, just to spread it upon the minutes.
Yes, sir.
That that person has been, been terminated.
So with, with the board's approval, then this motion, or this change to the personnel ordinance will be ratified.
Right.
And then there'll be a thirty-day waiting period before it becomes effective. So, subject to your question, I'll just, uh, motion by supervisor Trainor, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The next item on my report, or my list, is, um, pursuant to the ordinance that you just adopted, uh, related to public meetings. And so the idea here is to adopt a board policy that governs how we conduct this meeting right here. And, um, supervisor Carver had, uh, expressed a lot of interest in this policy in the past, um, and so it was something that I kinda wanted to get drafted up and, and get to the board, uh, and I'd be curious to, to, to hear your questions on it and whether or not you think it is a, a good policy that we could adopt and, and put into practice. And what's gonna drive, so subsequent to this, right, you guys have authorized me, uh, to move into this Civic Plus Meeting Agenda Management Program. And so that meeting agenda management procedure will reference this policy that is what's gonna give it the authority that it needs for me to, in, to, to ask the, all the department heads in the county to participate in that, uh, meeting, Civic Plus Meeting Agenda Procedure. So we got the ordinance, and we gonna hang the policy, which talks about how we conduct our meetings, which also addresses the agendas, and then I'm gonna hang a procedure underneath that that's, okay, go to this website, enter in, you know, sign in, upload your item for the agenda. And so that's gonna, that's kinda how this thing cascades into, uh, a good, firm foundational framework for governance.
Just to include the consent agenda.
Yes, exactly, and that's what's gonna let us get to the consent agenda that many of you have asked me about, why do we go over all of this minutia? And I, if I throw that thing on consent agenda, we won't have to, it's just one vote.
Motion?
So.
Motion by supervisor Trainor, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Uh, like, uh, next item, we have a series of invoices, uh, one of which, the biggest one, is one for Raymond James in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. Um, this comes back from May, I don't know where this invoice got off to, they, they, if they sent it to me, I didn't, I didn't, I got it misplaced and didn't get it in front of the board. Um, so I, I'd ask you approval to pay this item, I've reviewed all the other outstanding invoices, you've already approved them, they already in the process of being paid. So the current, uh, outstanding item is twenty thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, and then just a few other weird minor items, one of which is with Neil Schaper, that you heard me mention to, uh, Mr. Joe Max Higgins.
Motion to pay invoice, motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Trainor, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
So we're doing the thing a little bit different with payroll, I hope you like it, I'm trying to, um, I'm trying to lessen the amount of paper that gets put into your packet. And so what I've taken to is creating this list of items to be spread upon the minutes, uh, if you approve the list. If you approve the list, and it's got all of the information that comes on those forms that you're accustomed to seeing, if you approve the list, then we will ask the board president to sign the individual form that will be put into the employees' packets. We have those forms here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to present the individual forms themselves, but in the interest of saving the lives of trees, I have tried to take into just providing a list.
Motion for approval of payroll check. Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Traylor. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. unanimous.
I have one walk-on item. Controller and I got together Saturday morning, and I had kind of put, we, we got together Saturday morning and worked through the budget adoption schedule. And I walked the share of this, if you got one, I didn't know what I, told it was Saturday morning. I tried to put some into boxes, and I didn't know who got one and who didn't. Some of you had already picked up your stuff. Well, I didn't come in until ten o'clock Saturday morning, so I took a couple of hours. Um, who else? Who else? Rob.
Put one in the inbox again.
So, what, guys, what, I take full responsibility for this. I will not whine and say that it's a result of how busy J.D. and Ryan and, oh my goodness, look who walked in. What all this hospital business has, has done to me, I, I will not allow myself to claim that as an excuse. But we're a little bit behind on the budget. I've been working through all of that, trying to get us caught up. This is a schedule. We're going, what I'd like to do is, is do a budget workshop on August the twenty-fifth. We will publish announcements for the budget workshop at the Chancery Courthouse door on August the nineteenth, which is tomorrow, right? And then do public hearings and final adoption of the budget as noted in phase two there. So, the, the public hearing would take place on September the tenth, and the final publication would be September the twelfth. Sharon, that should be plenty of time for you to get your notice in the paper. We'll be pushing it all the way up to, because it doesn't run on Monday.
Well, what I normally do is once you get this, then I, all I got to do is put in my numbers, because I'm going to present that and put the board approval on the twelfth.
We do it on the same day. We'll have that all ready, ready.
Yes.
So that when they approve it, we'll.
Because I have to have it to the tax assessor by the Tuesday. So, we're good on the twelfth.
But we also have, I guess what I'm, yes, you have to have it to the tax assessor. What's concerning me is the, when does the, isn't the fifteenth a Monday?
Yes.
And so, Starved Daily News doesn't run on a Monday, so I'm trying to get you the ability to put it in the paper on that Friday, which is why the timing of it, it was done the way it does. And I may be misunderstanding the statutes. Um, well, I don't know. The twelfth may not be timed to run it. Oh, September the tenth is when, yeah, so we put on here September the tenth. That should give you time to get it to the tax assessor and get it published by September the twelfth, because Starved Daily would not run on Monday the fifteenth.
Yes, as long as you give me those two sheets that I showed you, because my stuff is already in the computer.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just got to add in the new numbers.
Not a problem.
So, I'll be ready on September. And I will email it to Brian at Starved Daily.
So, if you guys would approve this, this schedule here, I'll, I'll, time?
It's eight a.m.
Did I not put any time in here?
It says it on the note on the back. I'll make, I'll fix that same question, but I flipped over and saw it on that, it's eight a.m. in the morning. It said five.
For the twenty-fifth, but we did not set a time for the tenth. So, do you want to try and do the same time?
Early as well.
Early as if I knew that would be your answer. I knew your answer. Early as better for you, John, when it's well?
Eight o'clock.
Okay, Ben likes eight. Supervisor Little, she's studying her calendar. She's so busy.
Eight o'clock is business.
Eight o'clock is good.
About six thirty. How made that good? That's, um, I'm already here, supervisor.
Okay. So, eight a.m. on the.
I, I guess. Yes.
He doesn't know. He keep playing out there. They'll, they'll pull him down to Jackson. He may or may not be here.
Somebody has to tell me constantly where I'm going.
So, we need a motion to adopt this schedule. Motion by Supervisor Little, second by Supervisor Traylor. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. unanimous.
All right. Thank y'all for that. Um, now, Dean Lee, you've had a lot of work, but we just be ready for these things.
We're not afraid.
I'm afraid, I'm scared.
No, we're not scared. We're not afraid.
Subject, subject to your questions, that concludes my report.
Anything else I've got to demonstrate?
Surely I'm not forgetting anything. Thanks, sir.
Not the motion to accept the county report. Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Little. Any other discussion? All in favor? Our motion passes. unanimous.
Thank you all for your consideration.
If, if the board is in agreement, we will take a quick five minute break, because we've got to do something and go into executive session.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I jumped in. We can just stop sharing live real quick.
Well, I used to go in front of the county administrator, but you have me on the back.
That, that when the county administrator did it, it was on. I thought, guys, I'll do it better next time, Sharon. We've got, we've got a chance. We're sharing live.
The first thing, it's just typical, simply, the first thing is to acknowledge the affidavit of congregation for the district two repairs.
Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Traylor. All in favor? Motion passes.
Forgive my ignorance, what is that? I don't know what that is.
Showing that it was in the paper for being.
It is.
Yeah. And then the second thing I have is the affidavit of congregation for the district two repairs.
Motion by Supervisor Little, second by Supervisor Traylor.
Well, do I need to have a date of publication for the chiller?
Motion passes.
No? Okay. I'm listening. That's a lot. So, now, if, if, if the board is, you don't have anything?
I care about his, what he's.
Okay, well, well, we'll, we'll, we'll make the run with, with Supervisor right with then. Anything coming from District Four?
Not today.
Anything coming from District One?
No, sir.
Anything from District Two?
We covered it already with the grid deal.
Anything from District Five? Nothing from District Three. If it pleases the board, we'll take a quick ten minute break, then we'll come back and return and be ready to enter the executive session.
Thank y'all so much for coming.
It's so nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. We hope y'all have a safe trip going back.
Oh, we will. Thank you very much. Your prompt response on my email.
Well, I don't know responding, they didn't hit me. Proper son. Rumor has been that you, you beat us outstanding with all the, the information.
How are you? You girls are friends, friends. You guys are fun.
I gotta tell you something man, how does it feel to be uh, be off?
Yeah that's raw, raw.
I guess on the battlefield.
Yeah, battlefield. It's uh, you know it's great. You get the war.
That's a crazy thing.
Uh, you have to be respected here in every eight. But because of the position I had and different things I couldn't take it so I had to kept close to them.
That's what they got. Oh so that's a perm.
Yeah, a perm.
Don't worry mine's not any type of center.
Is that a little bit of a use?
Right.
They work long, that's why we give them.
Oh no.
He said he got to work out. I'd find it out.
Your wife.
They can do ten fields for pop for beer and they can do fifty.
Alright Mr. Williams. We got it.
Hey look at that even twelve man.
We're ready to resume share, uh for good share?
Yes sir.
We're ready for that purposes of that. We're, we're, we're ready to resume our, our meeting. We now need a motion to go into executive session. Close session to discuss uh, the lease or sale of uh, Sochi H Hospital. Regional Medical Center, Center Hospital. So can I get a motion to go into closed session to make that determination? Motion by Supervisor Little, second by Supervisor Trainer. We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.
We're now out of the executive session with no
We're now out of the executive session with no action taken. Again, we're still in the process of discussing the sale of lease of OCH Regional Medical Center. And at this particular time, we have a recommendation coming from our teams of Raymond James and Bucklestone. And we're ready to hear that recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution of board supervisor Octavia Alcannon improvement and authorize in the execution of the asset purchase agreement by Octavia Alcannon in Mississippi and Baptist Memorial Hospital, Octavia Alcannon Incorporated and Baptist Memorial Healthcare Corporation.
It's been moved by supervisor Trainer and seconded by supervisor Loon that we adopt the resolution to continue the process to get to the closing for the sale of OCH Regional Medical Center. Any other discussion? If not all in favor, motion passes four zero. We have officially adopted the asset purchase agreement for the sale of OCH Regional Medical Center to Baptist Memorial Hospital. That being said, are there any final comments coming from our team?
Just as we discussed, we still need to get Baptist's approval on their execution. If Baptist finalize it, if we've approved everything the county needs to do, we'll coordinate with Baptist council and we'll let you know as soon as we've got a final agreement.
And we will not be releasing anything until they-
Until we have a fully signed executive delivered agreement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. The board now will authorize that document to be signed. Motion by supervisor Tran seconded by supervisor Williams. All in favor, motion passes four zero.
Make a motion, we recessed Monday afternoon.
We got a motion on the table? Got a motion on the table, recessed until 8:00 a.m. on Monday. All in favor, motion passes four zero. We'll now recess. Thank y'all so much. Can we get this-